Good evening, folks. Welcome to the City of Lowell Zoner Appeals Public Hearing for November 25. This meeting is also can be viewed on FCC and you can join remotely as well through Zoom and by phone by scheduling ahead of time. Just a few reminders, if you have a cellphone or electronic device, if you could just turn it off and put it on silent, we appreciate it. And just a few reminders as well, if you're speaking on petition tonight, please come to the lectern and just state your name and address for the record. Moving on into continued business, we have none. New business, we have ZBA-2024-58, petition is a variance. The applicant is Franco American Holdings LLC, property located at 357 Pawtucket Street. The applicant has applied to Zoner Appeals to construct an 80-unit mixed-use building at 357 Pawtucket Street. The subject property is located in the traditional mixed-use TMU zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval for section 5.1 relief from the maximum height, maximum storage requirements, and for any other requirements of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor.
Thank you. Steve Penagiotakis, 138 Highland Ave., Unit 5, Lowell, Massachusetts. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I represent the petitioner Franco American Holdings LLC, Brian McGowan, the principal owners of 357 Pawtucket Street. Also with us this evening is Legal Counsel Jim Harrington, Chris LaZott from ProcoCon, our architects, and Dave Jordan, our engineer. Back on July 22nd, we were before you seeking variance, the same variance relief that we are requesting today, but due to a concern by one of our butters regarding our entrance to the property and how it might detrimentally affect their property, we decided that we would move our proposed entrance, the entrance on Fanning Street, back closer to where it exists today. Since we believe this to be a change that would need, we would need to resubmit before and come before you to request the necessary variance relief in light of this change so that my client can construct an 81-unit, 80 residential, one commercial, six-story L-shaped building that would run along the streetscape of Pawtucket and Fanning, with two of those stories having underground parking. The parcel is in the multi-use zoning district, and therefore, this proposed building would require variance approval per section 5.1 for the requested relief from the Lowell zoning ordinance. I will open it up. Any questions? We have our architect here and also our engineer.
Thank you for that. We're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition, opposition, and opposition, seen on that portion of public hearings close. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of petition, in favor, in favor, seen on the public hearings close. We're going to open questions, comments to the board. The Chair recognizes Mr. Procop. Mr. Procop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project, I think, would add so much character to the City of Lowell. Just one question, sir. Did you just mention it's 81 units or 80?
80, excuse me, 80 units, 80 residential, one commercial.
One commercial?
Mm-hmm. 81 units total, yeah.
Okay. The storefront, is that what I'm looking at?
Yeah, up on the corner, we were proposing to put 5,000, I think, no, how many square 1,600 square.
1,600 square feet, okay.
Hope this is for a little coffee shop type of setup.
Yeah, yeah. It's impressive. It does look good. As good as this looks, I think the right decision you made to make the entrance on Fanning Street makes it a lot easier because, I mean, I'm sure from the Transportation Department, they talked about especially that school streets in Pawtucket is a nightmare just trying to come across. So, I mean, I imagine the end result, you know, would be worth it, but the traffic is going to be, you know, during the time. And you did provide an updated landscaping plan, right? It might...
Good evening, for the record. David Jordan with Greenland Peterson, the site civil engineer. Yeah, we're, if we receive the variances tonight that we're requesting, our next step will be going to Planning Board for a special permit and site plan review, and as part of that, we would have a complete landscape package put together, which basically emulates the landscaping that you're seeing on the plans before you this evening.
Okay.
And just to confirm for the board, the entrance off of Franco, off of Fanning Street is the primary entrance for all of these residential units?
Okay, perfect. So you can't submit the landscaping plan till you get zoning approval to go to the Planning Board? Is that right?
It's not that we couldn't, it was just a matter of steps, meaning we're seeking zoning relief first to make sure we have a project to move forward with the Planning Board.
Okay, got you, understood. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. As I said, this is an impressive project, and I think it'll do great, you know, for the city, so, but I don't have any more questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Procop. The Chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we initially heard this petition, I was a strong advocate of the project, and I remain so this evening. I'll be voting in favor. Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The Chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to ask a couple of questions if I could. What is the change exactly? I'm not seeing the original site plan in the packet that we got, so I understand the new site plan, but what changed from the existing to the new?
The only change was with the original site plan that we brought before you back this past summer, the entrance on Fanning Street was all the way at the back end, the north end of Fanning Street. We have added a entrance that basically goes through the building up closer to Pawtucket Street, and that will become the primary entrance into the site. The driveway that still remains down at the north end of the site on the Fanning Street will be a gated emergency access only.
Emergency access only, okay. Okay, and what's the benefit here with that change?
Well, yeah, let's...
The benefit is if you, the Butter Lord Manor, their parking lot, basically, there's no curb there, so they just pull right in and park. So if we were sending everyone all the way down, we would be running right by where they're, those people would be pulling out of their parking garage to get onto Fanning Street, backing out a lot of them.
Thank you. I wasn't quite clear as to, I did notice the second cut-through, and I wasn't sure if that was there before because I didn't have the other plan to compare it to. And so, a lot of traffic coming out onto Fanning Street with this proposal, for sure. Two levels of parking in the garage, as well as the existing development that's on-site there.
Some of the existing, but a lot of it on the exit will, again, that's an entrance, right? A lot of the exit of the inside park will be going out to School Street area.
So in the conditions that we had last time, which I think we should consider reconditioning here, one of the conditions was the transportation demand management plan.
Yep.
Key component to managing this issue. So can anyone just speak to what they expect to accomplish with the transportation management plan?
Certainly. So our traffic engineering group is working on the transportation management document. There was actually a study done of the Pawtucket School Street intersection a number of years ago, and in that study, there was a number of recommendations that were made for improvements in that area, and so we've been asked to take a look at those recommendations and see which would be appropriate to implement for this project. So we'll continue to work with planning staff to identify those that we can undertake to, you know, help improve the situation out there.
I think our traffic, let me see if I can go to the comments that we got from the traffic engineer, transportation engineer, sorry. So implementing some short-term, low-cost recommendations, okay. But I think we also need to recognize that we need to implement some other solutions to travel other than vehicles. Is any of the TDM plan going to speak to bike paths, bike lanes, pedestrian, any of that, and bike storage and that kind of thing?
I believe it does. Certainly, we would be providing bike storage within the new building. I'm getting a little bit out of my expertise here, though, because, again, our traffic group is the one that's handling this. I believe we're on a bus route, and there may have been a recommendation on providing accommodations for that. So these are all the things that our traffic group is taking a look at.
And are you thinking that there's going to be a link with this project and UMass Lowell, or a link with this project and the Gallagher Terminal, or is, how, where do you see that kind of, or is everyone just going to spill out onto Pawtucket Street and good luck to them?
It's part of the corridor over there, and so just naturally, we get some UMass Lowell tenants in there, just because of the location for where we are and the proximity to the two campuses. So we expect that that will continue, but as far as an official arrangement, no, we don't have...
No, I didn't, but I mean, the whole Link project with that happening and then this happening, it just seems like there's...
Yeah, Link project, as you know, is a little further...
Not too far away.
No, not too far, but a little further down.
Walking distance, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, yeah, about a five-minute walk.
Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, as that starts to take root and bloom, you know, we'll be looking to see what we can do to try to help. Brian has other properties, of course, on Merrimack Street that are even a closer proximity, so.
Okay, thank you. I think I'd like to include, if the board agrees, the three conditions that we had previously. And let's see what those were. Comments, comments one, comments, oh, you've got those there, great. The applicant shall submit a landscape plan prior to applying for the building permit subject to DPD approval, and I think we'd just like to include that it incorporates the landscaping as shown on the plans and renderings submitted. The applicant shall obtain approval from the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility prior to applying for the building permit, and the third one is the applicant shall submit a transportation demand management plan for the brief trip generation memo, and a brief trip generation memo prior to applying for a building permit. Okay.
Yep.
I love this project, I'm so glad, and especially with the Link project being announced, this just seems to be a great location, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The Chair recognizes Vice Chairman, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so this seems to make sense to me. I understand from our prior decision that the Butter, there was an appeal from the Butter filed in Superior Court, so I presume that this is to dissuade whatever their concerns are, and hopefully that appeal will go away after, if we give you, grant you relief today. So, but it makes total sense to me, and I will be in favor of it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'm very familiar with the school. I went there for nine years, and so the property, I understand the property. Obviously, this has been before us. The only major change, like you said, is now you're coming up further Fanning and going underneath. I do have one question, maybe you know the answer, maybe you don't. I drive by there every day at 4:30, 5 o'clock, and there's cars parked the length of the garage on Fanning Street, the garage that you guys will be tearing down. Do you know who, are those cars part of, that's what, so it's not cars overflowing from...
No.
Okay.
We've got plenty of parking over for what we have currently with the Franco.
So now that you're installing a building with a sidewalk, is there some kind of, I know it's not really your concern, but to get those cars off Fanning, I mean, you guys can't dictate it, it's not, it's not even a city street, and it's not yours, but it's, I mean, with the sidewalk, we're going to kind of narrow that street as it is. Granted, now the entrance is further up, so it's really not going to have that much, but it's kind of going to, it's going to be a problem, right? Maybe it's not your problem solved, but it's going to be a problem.
It won't be as much of a problem because we have the people, our people turning in prior to that.
Right, but now our emergency, right, is down the bottom, so it could be a problem when we least want it to be a problem, right? If a fire truck has to get down there for access or something.
And I'm sure as part of the planning process, the Planning Board process, they'll hear from the fire department and what their recommendations are at that point.
Yeah, I mean, we get, we get...
You're right.
Comments from the fire department, but that's why I asked if it's overflow from the Franco project. If it's not, then there's really...
Yeah, no, all of our parking currently is contained on site while we're asking for the variance tonight is so we can continue to do that, provide two spaces per unit on our site. And that's, you know, we don't want to spill out into the street where the water is at their point.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hovey. I think this is a great project, great for the city, great for potential renters and people using this property, so I like the upgraded plans, it makes sense in terms of the new exits and entrances and all that, and the emergency exits. So you heard the comments of the board, and then you okay with the conditions that we talked about?
Yes, we are.
All right, there's no further comments. Can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman likes to make a motion for ZBA-2024-58 for variances at 357 Pawtucket Street, and the variance approval requires variance approval for section 5.1 for relief for maximum height and maximum stories required, and any of the relief required for the Lowell zoning ordinance with the three conditions that the applicant provide a landscape plan prior to applying for the building permit subject to DPD approval that incorporates the landscaping as shown on the plans and renderings. The applicant shall, the second one, the applicant shall obtain approval from the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility prior to applying for building permit, and the third, the applicant shall submit a transportation demand management plan and brief trip generation memo prior to applying for building permit.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Can you roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Our approval condition?
Member Callahan.
Approval conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approval conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Procop.
Approved conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approved.
You've been approved.
Thank you very much.
Wish you best of luck.
Again.
Thank you, have a good evening. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have ZBA-2024-59, petition is a variance. The applicant is Hamanis Patel, property located at 21 Catherine Drive. The Lowell Zoner Appeals will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Hamanis Patel for the variance approval to construct a front porch addition to the existing single-family home at 21 Catherine Drive. The subject property is located in the suburban single-family SSF zoning district. The project requires variance approval per section 5.1 relief from the floor area ratio FAR requirement and for any of the relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, guys. My name is Imansh Patel, and I'm the owner of the property, and as you see in the agenda, we are looking for variance for the front porch only, to build the farmer's porch, right, on 21 Catherine Drive in Lowell.
Okay. Okay. Now we're just going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of petition, in favor, in favor, in favor, seen on that portion of public hearings close. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, opposition, opposition. All right, seen on that portion of public hearings close, we'll open a question, comments to the board. Chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I reviewed the petition, and I looked very favorably upon it, and I came here this evening prepared to support it, but there's a procedural matter that's been brought to my attention this evening, that the proper posting may not have occurred. When I viewed the property, there was no posting. Can you...
The posting for the permits?
The sign in front of the...
Signage.
Oh, yeah, we, I went to the city to gather, request a new one, by mistake that was blown away or is gone, but yes, the sign for...
Sir, can you speak into the microphone?
The sign for permitting, right, the yellow sign?
Yeah.
That, by mistake, somebody threw it away, and I went to the city to get a new one.
He's talking about a building permit, yellow.
Yellow, yeah.
He's talking about yellow.
So the zoning posting is not there, is that correct?
Request for a permit sign, correct.
All right, as I said, I favor the project, but I think this procedural matter may prohibit us from voting on it this evening. I'm going to ask the Chair for further clarification on that before I offer any additional comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brier. Chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, we require basically the site plan to be mounted on a full-size sheet to be displayed within viewing from the street.
Okay.
For, I think it's 14 days, Fran, is that correct, prior to the hearing?
Okay.
Yes.
So it has to be publicly notified so the neighbors can understand that there's something going on there and can have an opportunity to voice their opinions.
Okay.
If they choose not to, you know, pay attention otherwise. That being said, the application that we have in front of us has some holes, misleading material that I'd like to see corrected for the next time.
Okay.
Namely, the site plan indicates things that are already built.
Correct, okay.
So I'd like to have the site plan corrected that only has what's being proposed here.
Okay.
And the zoning table document, namely the FAR number, to be accurately depicting what currently exists on the site, which I believe is .58.
Okay.
So we have in this zone a .35, so you exceed the current FAR significantly with what's already built, and then you're proposing about a 400-square-foot addition to that with the porch, just so that we have a clear picture as to what's there.
Okay.
And I think that's all, so I really would just like to see a document that accurately depicts what we have. And maybe, Fran, if you could, just kind of help me understand, if this addition took place without a variance for FAR in the past, should we be looking for a variance for the addition as well as the porch in the next hearing?
No, because it's already built.
But it never got a FAR variance from the board, and I think it's only a couple of years old. It's not, I don't believe it's 10.
I would need to look into that further.
If you could.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The Chair recognizes the Vice Chairman, Ms. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so I'm in agreement with my fellow board members that notice is important, so we have to get that notice up there, and I share the same concerns about the proposed site plan that Dennis just brought up as well, so there'll need to be some clarifications on amended site plan with, you know, clarifying the items that Member McCarthy just pointed out, so. So I would just suggest that we continue this for the notice purposes and make sure you get that signage up and provide the amended site plan, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. Chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. When did you put the addition on the back of the house?
We started in last October.
Okay, when was it finished?
Just finished three months ago.
Okay, so the addition in the back just finished three months ago.
Everything is done except, so we were talking to the, what's his name? The inspector Fuller, and he told us, we are waiting for the final sign-off from the other house. So he's like, start the process, you don't have to wait too much for the front.
Because along with Member McCarthy, his point on the FAR, the back setback has two different measurements on it. One says it's 25.2 feet from the property line. The other one says it's 20 feet from the property line. If it's 20, then we would have needed a variance for that. If it's 25.2, then it's just over. And again, the garage was too close to the property line also. But yeah, you have to have a big sign outside, and DPD will help you explain. It's not the yellow permit sign you put in the window. It's a bigger sign posted so everybody in the neighborhood can see.
Who can help me with that sign you said? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. Chair organizes Mr. Proko, Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo the same sentiments. That was my main concern, the fact that the sign was not there when I went by yesterday. And, you know, to be consistent as a board, we wouldn't want to vote on this until that sign is there so that we are aware that all of your neighbors are notified of you doing some work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Proko. Sir, I think you heard the comments of my colleagues. You know, I think it's a nice project. I think it'd be fine to, just the open meeting laws, we just got to have the public notice and public posting. And then when you come back, like my colleagues said, you just have to have the updated site plan, which is what you're planning to do in FAR and all that, the requirements. Ms. Segliano, if we push it out to the next meeting or two?
Probably January, if they've got to do 14 days, then we don't, they're not going to have time to put the sign up, so probably January.
All right, sir, so we're going to continue the matter until January 13th. So that'll give you a little over a month to get all the signs and the public posting on the site, the big poster sign.
Yep.
And DPD will help you with that. And then just work with your contractor or builder with the updated site plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. McCarthy, did you have another comment, sir?
I'm sorry, if I could, by the way, the place looks beautiful. It really, really looks amazing. You take very good care of your property, for sure. Your floor plan shows a temple that doesn't seem to be reflected in the city plan that we have.
So we get it updated.
So is that an addition that you're asking for?
No, it was already, we already got signed off on that.
I think it's 7'4" by 5 feet off the living room?
Maybe the plan they submitted was the old one. I will get the new plan, update the plan.
Okay. And then the decks also seem to change from site plan to what you have in the floor plan?
We made it smaller, the deck was bigger before, we made it.
Just try to clarify, they don't match. And the last one is, you have two different driveways.
Yes, the old one and the new one.
So Fran, if I could, I think there's only one 20-foot curb cut allowed in this suburban, single-family.
That's correct.
But we probably have more than one 20-foot setback on this lot. So if we could look into that, too, and understand if there needs to be another variance for that or if that's going to be something we don't, okay. Thank you very much, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Any other comments by my colleagues? Mr. Callahan, did you have a comment, sir?
Quick, Mr. Chairman, Fran, I saw you raise your hand during the court. Did you have anything else to add, or was that just? Okay, sorry, no, I just saw, while we were commenting, I saw you raise your hand, so I just wanted to make sure you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. There's no further comments. We have a motion to continue the matter to January 13th.
Three, Mr. Chairman, likes to make a motion for ZVA 2024-59 for variances for 21 Catherine Drive to be continued to January 13th.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second round, Mr. Proko to continue the matter. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
I approve continuance.
Member Callahan.
Approve continuance.
Member McCarthy.
Approved continuance.
Member Brier. Member Proko.
Approved continuance.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right, the matter's been continued. So we'll see you in January 13th, sir. And just for the public notice, this is the notice of continuance. There'll be no other notice regarding this continuance. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have ZBA-2024-60. The petition is a variance. The applicant is Jay Sri Triveda, property located at 65 Leonard Circle. The Lowell zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing to hear unto the person relative to an applicant by Jay Sri Triveda to construct and attach carport at 65 Leonard Circle. The subject property is located in suburban, single-family zoning district. The project requires variance approval for section 5.1 for relief from the minimum side yard setback requirements for any relief required in Lowell zoning ordinance. Anyone here for Leonard Circle?
Leonard Circle?
Leonard Circle.
Leonard Circle?
Oh, yeah, come on up. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Jay Sri Trivedi, 65 Leonard Circle, Lowell, Mass. Apply for, huh? Jay Sri.
And I apologize, I know I said your name wrong, I apologize. You want to tell us about your project?
Build a car porch. I did not know about the permit situations. Lost my husband five, four years back, and I've had a trouble in a snow time. So somebody advised me, and I have no idea that we have to go through all this. I wasn't totally unaware of this, so I made this mistake. So I apply for the variant.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we'll open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this project? In opposition, in opposition. All right, seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this?
You have the Leonard Circle?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, I'm sorry, I didn't think I was late. I thought I was third or fourth on the schedule, I'm sorry. Hushman Davshar, Taj Engineering LLC here in Lowell. We are here, I'm here tonight to represent the owner and the applicant of 65 Leonard Circle. The case, in this case, this application is really a very classical situation. A single mom being taken advantage of by a contractor, simply, who told her, you don't need any permit, and charged her a good amount of money to build this carport. And, but the fact is, as soon as she was notified by the city officials, after construction, way after the construction was completed, she was notified by the building department that she needs to get a permit for this. She right away called me, she was very disturbed. She even talked to the DPD and so on and so forth. And as a result of all that, here we are tonight. I remember this from last time. So the, it's a single-family home, two-story wood, located on Leonard Circle. And this is the existing house. This is an enclosed portion in the back. The property lines were not really determined as such at that time. As you can see, the stone wall of the neighbor doesn't crouch on her property and so on and so forth. And this here, 19 by 23 feet, is the carport that was built for her. She had no knowledge that she had to get a permit, she was advised, she received bad advice from the contractor that you could go ahead and do this. She doesn't need a permit. The carport is attached to the existing house on the right side, side yard, and it's supported with these three posts, 1, 2, 3. It's close to the property line. It's at this corner, it's a foot setback to the property line and 5.3 feet in the front right corner. So the relief she's requesting from the board is obviously for the side setback. 10, sum of 25 is requested, and what is provided is none. 1, sum of 47.5. So on the right side, obviously, she needs another 10 feet for which, I'm sorry, 9 feet for which she's requesting a variance. Just to give you an idea of what the structure is really, I have these pictures, which basically shows a roof attached to the right side of the garage. And these are the three posts, and it's open all around. It's not that there is a foundation poured and the frost wall and so on and so forth. And it's really, we believe, does not have any adverse impact on the overall appearance of the neighborhood or in the area in general. It just happens that there is a drainage easement, I guess, in that area. But I don't think the applicant, especially since this is just on the footings, on the posts, I don't think the applicant would have any problem if any time the city or the owners of the easement would have to do some construction activities within that area. So with that, my apologies again, and I will be more than happy to answer any question.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comments and summary of the project. Now we're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this project? In opposition, in opposition, seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor, seeing none. We're going to close the public hearing, we're going to open questions, the comments to the board. Chair organizes Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to do a little housekeeping here on the site plan first before I dive into understanding this a little better. But you state in the zoning, zoning analysis, if you will, side yard, minimum side yard, 10, sum 25, provided 1 foot, sum 47.5, with a sought relief of 9 feet. Can you just walk me through the math there? Where's the 47.5 feet?
Sorry, that's, that's, that's a typo. The sum is probably 14, 1 foot, 14.
Okay, tell me what it should say so that we can put it as a condition that you correct the site plan, please? But if you could just tell me what it should say?
Sure. The requirement is 10, sum of 25. In this case, it is one where the shortest setback we have, and the sum is 14.
Okay.
Which is existing, which is measured from the existing house. So the existing house already has 14 feet setback.
Okay, so you're going to redo the site plan analysis chart for the zoning and say provided is 1 foot, sum 14, and sought relief is 11 feet? Okay, all right. And then, that's, thank you. And then the drainage easement that we have here on both your site and the neighboring site, that's a drainage easement that has some drainage structures beneath it? What is that drainage easement? And what does that, what does that have, if you know?
I think, from what I remember, there might be a pipe coming, because there's a drainage that way, coming in this direction and taking in that direction.
We don't, we don't know, we don't know what it is?
It is a drainage. It's like a big hole thing, I don't know, but it.
Can you come to the microphone?
Sure, go ahead, yes.
Yeah, I see one, like easement, they say, but I see one big hole thing, and they put something on it, but it was running all the way back, something?
So it sounds like it's a drainage culvert that goes underground and drains from in the street area back to?
No, back to my yard, my neighbor's yard.
Okay. The reason I wanted to know this a little bit better is because you're building on top of it. You have a foundation there and for supporting the structure. And your neighbor would also have that concern whether building on a drainage easement makes any sense, especially if you've got a culvert that may need to be repaired or maintained in the future.
It's not like that, though.
That said, I'd rather not tear down your carport and knowing that you took the risk and built it, not knowing probably what the risk was, but have it there in place. And thinking to myself, the neighbor probably would not want to build on top of that culvert if they had the choice. So your side yard setback might be considered to the edge of the 20-foot drainage easement in theory, so as far as unbuildable. So I don't think we're squeezing the neighborhood badly by leaving this carport in place. So I would just like to correct the site plan and make a condition that you correct the site plan to indicate the setback as it exists with 14 foot provided and 11 foot relief sought.
Yes, we'll submit the revised plan this week.
All right, no further comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
If I may, sir, Mr. Chairman, the posts are a 10 to 12-inch sonotube. And they are not very wide, and that's all it is. Because there is really not too much, too much load on that as such. It's open all around, so.
I understand, but knowing how we have significant rain events these days, and the old drainage systems may not do what they need to do in the future. If there needs to be a major repair done there in an emergency situation, your garage carport would be lost, at least that corner, in an emergency situation, unfortunate as it is. That's all I have, thank you.
If something happened, they can.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Fran, I didn't see any comments from staff or any of the other city departments on this, on file. Are there any, is there any concerns from DPD? Or do we know anything about, because the only thing that's on the website that I see is just the packet, just the application and what was provided, the site plan and the narrative, and basically the entire package. That's the only thing that's listed on the.
Right, that might have been missed. I don't, speaking for staff, I don't think that we have any. I don't, speaking for staff, I don't think that we have any concerns about that.
Okay, so I guess should we assume that it, the normal course, just no comments? And we didn't hear back from the city departments about any concerns or anything? Because I'm sure one of the things to, I guess, kind of maybe be concerned about would how the fire department may want to comment on this and how this would have any effect on that.
If you don't mind, I'll take a look and see if I can see.
Yeah, Member Cal.
Yep. And Prokop?
Are you saying that you didn't see the DPD comments?
I, I'm looking on the website.
Do you have a memo?
Yeah.
So Mark does have a memo, a comment memo.
There's a memo?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so do I, that's why I was saying.
Okay, it wasn't posted on the website. Maybe it got emailed, but never, never got posted? Okay, I didn't, that's my, my bad for not checking my emails, I guess. Regardless, I mean, yeah, I'm finding this a little unusual as far as the, you know, you delay, you know, you got to lay the land there, that, okay. All right, I see the comments now. Okay, I was looking more for, see if any other.
Besides engineering.
Engineering, no fire department. Okay. No, it's just because we're putting a, you know, putting a new addition with the, thank you. Putting the addition on. One of the concerns, obviously, would be, I don't know if the fire department had anything to say about it because of, you know, whether it would cause any additional issues or problems. But I do see, you know, ZBA does not have, staff does not believe that the carport designated from the intended zoning. And I understand, we've run into this issue in the past where contractors come in that provide, you know, these carports and then basically cut and run and don't tell people. So I appreciate that you're coming, essentially coming in for forgiveness, which I'm sure if you provided the proper comment, a proper advice from the people who assemble the carport, you'd be here, you know, beforehand. So I don't penalize you for that, so, but I don't see any other further issues with this, but I'll listen to one of my fellow board members have to say, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. Chair organizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thanks, I don't have any questions on this.
Thank you. Chair organizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'm sorry for your loss. As I looked at this, and I drove by yesterday at the site, I don't see it as there's any issues. I think you tried to do the right thing, as Member Callahan said. You know, you asked for forgiveness instead of permission, but I, I don't have any issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Prokop. Chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a beautiful home, and you're here tonight doing the right thing. I support your petition.
Thank you, Ms. Brier. Yeah, I think the comments that my colleagues had, I have the very same feeling. You know, I think to me, it's more of a, kind of a corrective clerical, you know, coming in just to make sure all the procedural documentation you get is needed. Again, you know, to my colleague's point, we do have some predatory people out there that take advantage of people, and they kind of just do a kind of, you know, a real quick job and then just take off and don't go through all the steps and procedures. So, you know, I support this. Again, I think it's a very lovely carport, you have a lovely home. And we're just, with the conditions that we talked about, you're okay with them? The one, the updated site plan?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Sure.
Any other comments from my colleagues for the motion? Can we roll motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-69 for variances at 65 Leonard Circle, variance from section 5.1 for relief from minimum side yard setback requirement and any other relief required by the law's zoning ordinance, with the condition that the site plan be updated to show correctly the provided side yard setback at 1 foot, sum 14 feet, relief sought 11 feet.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy. Second round, Mr. Prokop. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the condition.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the condition.
Member Brier. Member Prokop.
Approve the conditions.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right, you've been approved. Wish best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Today is my husband's birthday, but he's not here, and he gave me a gift.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, best of luck. Moving on to other business on our agenda, we have elections of officers.
We already, Fran, we already did the election of officers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
September?
I didn't see it in our internal spreadsheet.
Okay.
Planning board is doing there, so I just added it. But if that was added in error, you can just ignore it.
Okay.
I believe it was Member McCarthy that mentioned that our bylaws require us to do the, what, September meeting, Member McCarthy?
Got it, okay.
So if you want to update the spreadsheet and maybe.
Yeah, it's just our internal, how we keep track of the projects, so I'll fix that.
Yes, you can leave where you like, or you can stay, up to you. You can leave, yeah. Have a good evening, ma'am. Thank you for coming. Best of luck.
It was on the agenda for the September 9th meeting, earlier than I thought, that's why I didn't see it. So you can just ignore.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so the other item for other business, we have minutes for approval for November 14th meeting minutes. Any edits, updates, comments on the minutes for November 14th from my colleagues, seeing none?
Yeah, I may have just one little comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours.
I just want to rectify that the adjournment, that it was not Member Brier that seconded the adjournment, it was George Prokop. Thank you.
Okay. We could just note that.
We discussed that last meeting, yes. My.
We just added that, that we appreciate it. All right, any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, can we motion to approve, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November 14th, 2024.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second round, Mr. Prokop. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes unanimous, the minutes are approved. Any other comments before we adjourn?
I look forward to seeing all my fellow board members at the City of Lights Parade this Saturday. Looking forward to a big turnout, it's going to be a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
And happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you, Ms. Prokop.
We should get a float for next year.
All right. Agreed, agreed.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Enjoy.
Agreed. All right, if there's no further comments, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn, remember Mr. McCarthy?
Second.
Second round, the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you, have a good night.